And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, we'll kick off here. We have an approval. Let's start with the minutes for February 27?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have been approved. And just before we approve the agenda real quick, I'm sure making a motion that we amend the agenda. And we'll let our music folks join first and get in and out and we'll pick up on the agenda from there. We have a motion to approve the agenda as I think. All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're good. All right, let's go ahead and Dr. Cohen, turn it over to you or?
So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Harding and his group here who are going to share and perform and tell us a little bit about some of the highlights.
Well, thank you very much. So behind me is the Nipmuck Jazz Ensemble. They performed at the MAJE Festival on Wednesday of last week and received a gold medal for their efforts, which means more work for them because now they have to get ready to play at the state finals at the end of the month. So we were asked to kind of showcase what's happening in the music department. I figured this is a great opportunity for them as our rehearsal coincides with school committee meetings. We'll double dip here a little bit. So we'll play a tune and then as I dismiss them, we'll chat a little bit about other things that have happened in the music department recently as it's starting to become our busy time of the year. And we're excited to share some things that have been happening with us. Hopefully it doesn't get too loud. So that was an Ellington tune arranged by John Masman called Akupaka. And so that's one of our ones that features everybody in the group. So we want to share that with you guys and the hard work that all of these students have been putting in. Last, we do have rehearsals, so I'm gonna kick them out and talk a little bit about what else is happening in the music department. We'll get set up on stage. So that group is one of two jazz ensembles at Nipmuck. We have the Lab Band, which is the younger group of students, and that's open to anybody. And that group also performed on Wednesday and received a bronze medal for their efforts, which is fantastic for that group. They got a lot of good feedback from the judges and the clinicians that were at that festival. That festival is the one that we host here at Nipmuck, which is a privilege for us to do. And so a number of these students also helped us with the whole logistics of that process as we were going through. So they were bringing schools from all over. We had 11 bands total from all over central Massachusetts coming and participating. So our students were ambassadors to those other schools coming in and showing them where to go and things. And even my freshmen, who are a great group of kids, stepped up and were here all afternoon and evening helping out, which is fantastic, which is what it should be, you know? And that's being part of the music department. That's why kids do it, for that sense of community. And it helps us when we want to make sure that we're promoting what we do so well in the district as well. Real quick recap from September when we were doing pep band, you know, and having a great time at the football games. Mother Nature cooperated, you know, pretty much every single game. It was really warm for most of them, but it was exciting and the kids loved it. All the way through to, we did some workshops for kids in the band world. We did five through 12 workshop. And then we also did a choral workshop where we decided as a department that these formal performances are great, but we need kids to continue to perform in different capacities. So that was an opportunity for us to have the older students work all the way down through fifth grade in these two very informal afternoon workshops. And it's just something that we tried this year that was new and we loved it and it was great. And it was a great experience for the kids and so much so that I know Chorus is gonna plan on doing another workshop. We did a jazz workshop and an acapella workshop. And so these kind of relaxed, informal opportunities where we can share music with each other on top of the more formal ones, it well rounds the department for us. So that's a very special thing that we've started doing and we're looking forward to continue doing. We have also had students audition above and beyond these ensembles. A number of these students were in the Central District Band. So they auditioned, about 1,400 students auditioned, and a few are selected to perform in either the band, the chorus, the orchestra, or the jazz ensemble. And we had a number of students selected for that. And then a number of students, we had two actually, excuse me, that were selected for the Allstate, which just happened this past weekend. And those two students were in the chorus and that was auditioned for students out of the entire state. They were selected and went into, they were in Westford and spent six hours, eight hours rehearsing. And then Mother Nature said that you weren't gonna have your concert on Saturday unfortunately because of snow. So they were a little bummed about that, but they did get to, they opened up the ballrooms and they performed for each other, so they had that experience. So these wonderful opportunities are things that our kids are participating in throughout the year. For ensembles, we are looking at doing MICA at the end of the month. So we're back to that festival, similar to MAJE, which is the jazz version of that. MICA is the Massachusetts Instrumental Choral Conducting Association. So essentially what schools will do is they will go perform a number of selections. They will get feedback from clinicians that come from all over the country and are really qualified at providing feedback, tell the groups what they're doing well and things that they need to continue to work on. So we put ourselves out there and we get to hear schools from all over the state as well as schools hearing us. So it kind of bursts that bubble of what you do at home and try and expand that a little bit. And so we're looking forward to that at the end of the month. And then, of course, our traditional concerts are still going on too. So we have a couple of those. Misco is having their concert this week actually, and then next week is ours and then the end of the month is MICA. Junior districts is the same thing as senior districts. We have those students, we had a number of students audition, and that festival is gonna take place at the end of April into May. So we have a number of students who are doing that as well. So things are back, which is great, you know? Coming out of COVID was not easy for any of us, particularly in the music world, but thanks to all the hard work from the staff and the students, we're giving these kids these opportunities and exposing these kids to these events and they seem to be enjoying it and that's why they're a part of music. So, thank you so much. I appreciate you letting us share this with you and we'll keep you up to date as we continue throughout the year.
And while Sam is here, I know he doesn't want to be the center of attention. I was gonna make him the center of attention at least for a moment. He was recently recognized for his leadership in music education Massachusetts and received the Massachusetts Music Educators Association Lowell Mason Award. And I believe there's a ceremony that he just went to last week.
Yep, so at the Allstate Conference, all the music educators in the state kind of get together this one time of year. And so at the general meeting, just before the keynote, they recognized myself and another music educator from Wellesley for the Lowell Mason Award, which was a very nice honor. And it was very kind and it was a good ceremony to be a part of.
Well deserved, obviously. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Questions? All right, well if you're not busy on March 25th and you're around the Norwood area, we'll be performing at Norwood High School for the state finals and hopefully we'll see what happens. We'll keep you posted from there. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, so we'll pull back to our agenda here. At school, committee chairperson comments. I'll make one comment real quick to the group. This past Friday, Dr. Cohen and I attended the Tri-County Superintendent Legislative Breakfast. A number of superintendents from the area spoke and really had an opportunity to meet with 30, 40, 50 legislators in the room and talk to them a little bit about some of the concerns that have come up recently around the OSD increase to specialization that takes place at private schools. So OSD is the Operational Services Division. It sounds like it's a little-known group that sits in the executive office. And for years and years, they have set a one and a half, two, two and a half percent annual increase for what the private institutions can raise the rates. And this year, they kind of surprised everybody and came out with a 14% increase. So it was interesting hearing some of the thoughts from these other superintendents, right? This could be significantly impacting to a lot of schools' budgets. And it was also done, really out any warning, wasn't done with a step system. So the ask at the meeting was really to our legislators to say, hey, you know, what can you do to help the schools, right? Is there ability to use what they refer to as pothole funds to kind of help fund the transition or maybe fund this transition over, you know, a two to three-year period? And so we did have the opportunity to meet with folks from Dr. Fattman's office and
And Representative Murray was there too.
Brooks and Murray as well. So I think it was actually very interesting for a time I'd done something like that and really did a nice job of putting this kind of on their plate as to what's going on. So there's two bills that are being proposed to help schools with this funding. And I guess we can provide more information on that, but hopefully we can manage our representatives to help sponsor these bills to help with some of the budget impact that will come from this change. Did I say anything, Dr. Cohen?
No, no. In each of the roundtables, I participate in the Worcester County and the Tri-County and that's because we're right on the line, so I have the opportunity to do that. And so each roundtable superintendent came up with their own agenda of what's really impacting. What Tri-County did is in their legislative agenda, it really impacts what they decided to go with, to advocate for at the session. And would the bills really impacting everyone in the state? And so I think that that was a good choice and they presented it at the session too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would we ever consider bringing together like a formal response that we might send like as a school committee that we would all sign up for?
I think it'd be great idea. I think, you know, a letter written to both of our representatives would be perfect. Would you love to volunteer to do that?
Sure.
Cool.
Why not?
You know what? We'll ask Phil, our chairperson.
Yeah, we'll be waiting until next year.
No, I'm happy to help you do that. Or I think it'd be a great idea for all of us to sign up and send something over. All right, next up, community comments. Anything in the room? Anything on want to?
I see the pins racing this time.
All right, great. All right, now we can move to our school committee student representatives.
So this March is National Inclusion Month, and Best Buddies has taken the opportunity to ask students and faculty to take the pledge to include. Buddies went around to all advisory classrooms this, or last Wednesday, just read the word of taking exclusion out of all of our classrooms to build a friendlier community and to encourage signups for next year.
And then in parallel to the musical performance, the NURSD is holding a summer jazz workshop from April 14, from August 14 to August 18. And it's from grade six to 10. And we want is for the children and just a one-week program providing an opportunity to grow music skill and just to explore jazz. And then also there is, we see a 502 C exam tomorrow at Nipmuck. And it's just for people in order to show their achievement in another language, English and other languages.
Nice all. Thank you. All right, move on to superintendent and literature updates. Dr. Cohen?
Yep, so we just went through the music program highlights. And so now we're gonna move on to athletic program highlights. And I think I have Chris Schmidt back there, if you can come on up. And also Scott Glassman as well, who will be presenting on highlights from Nipmuck and Misco Hill athletic programming so far this year.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. You know, certainly appreciate you attending tonight. And Dr. Cohen had asked Mr. Glassman and I to present on sort of some highlights and some things that are going on in the athletic department at both Nipmuck High School and Misco Hill. One of the things that we have done today, as, well, Sam brings up the presentation, is we've combined some of the things that we do specifically with parents and our preseason meetings, and we've combined those to do those jointly this year. We did it in the winter for the first time and we'll do it in the spring as well. So that's not highlighted in the presentation, but I did want to mention that. So. All right. So for Nipmuck, I know this is a, this is a kind of a brief highlight of this year up to date and then some of the overall things that we have been going over as a department and really, you know, over the last few years, I think maybe since COVID might be the best way to describe it. So if you're not familiar with the program as a whole, we have 27 varsity sport teams, 13 male, 12, excuse me, 13 female, 12 male, and two mixed gender. And those are designations by the MIA, and that's not necessarily how we do it, but all of the way we look at it does, the way that the MIA designates those specific sports. We have four co-op opportunities, which means our athletes participate on sports that we do not offer here on teams at other schools. And as you can see, that's boys' ice hockey through Northbridge, girls' ice hockey through Hoppyton, boys and girls swimming through Grafton, and wrestling through Northbridge. And then we host a few different schools through some of our programs, specifically alpine ski, boys' lacrosse, and boys' volleyball. And we also house unified basketball and esports as well. So that's kind of just a quick overview. Just some quick highlights this year. I think we've had a very successful year to date. Three central Massachusetts titles, our girls' soccer team, our girls' volleyball team, and our cheer team. Their designation is a little bit different, but I would qualify that under the central mass category. Three league titles, girls' soccer, girls' volleyball, and girls' indoor track. And I think it's especially important to recognize our girls' indoor track team this year, which has really done a phenomenal job. And the things that you see up there, these are firsts in school history. So Coach Townsend and his staff really deserves a lot of kudos. And it's a young team. It's predominantly freshmen and sophomores, so I think we have some great things to see. In addition to, we also have seven student athletes moving on to participate at the NCA level. We've had two separate celebrations for them, one in the fall, one in the winter. You can see some photographs from our winter ceremony. And I would say on average, we probably send anywhere from five to eight student athletes per year, depending on sort of how things go. I would say certainly no less than five. And I'm gonna say maybe nine was the most we've had in my time here, which for school our size is pretty impressive and talks about the dedication that those student athletes have and willing to take that next step, whether it be at the Division I, II, or III level, which is, it's a commitment. I will tell you that regardless of such. So certainly kudos to those students as well. Sort of overall, three of the things that we have been focusing on over the last couple of years and specifically this year are three things. It's inclusivity, social emotional health, and really the combination of school and community and really uniting the two and that men and up didn feels a part of what we're doing here at Nipmuck and then at Misco as well. So as far as inclusivity goes, our unified basketball program is one of the, certainly the shiny examples of that. We're the only school in our league to have an MIA-recognized unified basketball program. It just finished its fourth year. In the last four years, it has over doubled in size. The first year we ran it, we had about 12 athletes and partners, right? So we're talking students with disabilities and then students without. Now, this year, we're up to 27, which is a very large team, to be honest. But it's been a fantastic experience for those student athletes. It's one of the most rewarding experiences you will see, especially if you go to a game. It's a very unique setting and, you know, people come out in droves. I know our cheer team is, came and cheered for our kids. It really is, it's a special event. We are looking at possible expansion. In, the MIA does offer bocce. They actually do it through the school, the school council, the student councils in the state. So we're looking at that. And then we're actually, Dave Antonelli is looking at piloting golf, starting next year in conjunction with Shining Rock, which is our home golf course. So that'll be fun as well. That's not a sanctioned sport, but it's something that we're trying to get off the ground as well. And then certainly mentioned our esports program, and Sam O'Neill's done a fantastic job with that. Sam is one of our co-advisors and I know takes, takes the lead on that. This is our second full year. Esports competes in the spring and the fall and overlaps somewhat of our more traditional sports schedules. I think it's accurate to say, see if it's doubled in size over the last year, not only in numbers, but also in the different programs and games that our kids play and compete against other schools. So this is through the MSAA, which is the school administrator's side of the MIA. And on a weekly basis, Sam and his student athletes compete against other schools throughout the Commonwealth in different particular titles that the kids participate in. It's been a remote program, meaning the kids have been playing from home. You can do that, obviously in the video game world, but I know there is a big push to move it into the school setting themselves. So Sam, I know, has done a real nice job of trying to help us sort of, what are we gonna need from a hardware and software setting to get that off the ground? Because that is, it's an expensive venture, but one that's certainly worthwhile. And, you know, also to mention the number of ways that Sam and his kids have publicized what they do, whether it be through YouTube channel, Twitch, which is another social media video platform, if you're not familiar with it, but also just, you know, trying to get their names out there and get kids involved. I think it's been a fantastic thing. I don't know, Sam, if there's anything else you wanted to mention?
I just want to give a big shout out to Mito Manzi, who is our unofficial official team manager. He has been truly instrumental in getting this off the ground. It's amazing. I know, you know, the players are really, they want this to continue. But Mito is really, he's made all of the, all of the flyers, he's made all of the social accounts, he keeps up with the scores, he helps with, with play versus, which is where we, the MSAA sponsored matching happens. We do that every, every match day. So he helps keep up with that. He keeps up with making sure that everybody has, you know, all their, you know, just the minute detail, from the minute details to the greater details, he's been absolutely instrumental. So I really could not have done that without you here. And the kids just want, they... not have done that without him here. And the kids just want, they, they want, they want this to continue, and they want this to grow. So they really would have wanted to. So I really, I really appreciate everything Chris has done and Jamie and Campera, I co-op as first time. So it's been, it's been an absolute blast. Absolutely love it. Wouldn't want it any other way.
So obviously, we've had a real focus on the connection between school and community, and we do that really through some partnerships, both locally and then throughout the state. Certainly, when you talk about the involvement that we've had with our youth organizations being involved in the hiring of our coaches, one of the things that's been a centerpiece of my time here is really getting students involved as part of the hiring process of our coaches on the committees as part of the finalist round. And then also getting representatives from our youth programs that may have students that will be ascending here to Nittany at some point and really allowing them ownership in who we're bringing in, that our goal is to make connections with those youth programs. Also, a new group this year that I think is a group you're going to hear a lot about, and I know you already have, is our NUCP, that is the Mendon Upton Community Project Group. I know they've talked with you guys before, but you know, we're already seeing the dividends that they have been working on in helping attempt to approve, improve the facilities throughout both Mendon and Upton. So they broke ground last week and are starting a walking, community walking trail throughout the perimeter of our campus here, specifically in the athletic area. So I know Bill Casey, who's one of the co-presidents, Bill has already actually started the clearing for that. So, you know, they've done a great job. And, you know, really, this is going to be a group instrumental in really our future. You know, the needs and improvement of our facilities, I think are going to paramount in our world, that being the world of athletics, where really, we are now in the minority as a school that does not have lights, that does not have a track, that does not have a synthetic field, or in some cases, multiple synthetic fields. And we're beginning to be hurt by that. So I think their work and their vision over the next few years is, is going to be an important part of our programs being able to take that step forward. I'd like to mention Nichols College. The woman you see pictured there, Dr. Charlie Robert, Dr. Charlie is the head of the sports management program at Nichols College. We created a relationship with Charlie right before the COVID outbreak, where Charlie comes and brings some of her students, usually third, fourth-year sports management majors, and they come and give presentations to our families, to our students about NCAA athletics and what that means. And it's been a fantastic partnership with Charlie and her program, and they've been a wonderful resource for not only myself, but our kids, really. And it's a, it's a fantastic partnership to have. Certainly, our partnership with Milford Regional and Mass General through their physical therapy program, the sports medicine program, they have done some things that give our athletes priority in terms of orthopedics, in terms of physical therapy, where any athlete who is injured that requires more than just a minute clinic or a primary care visit, we have programs that can help sort of fast-track our students and get them the appointments that they need that could sometimes take weeks to obtain. So they've been fantastic with that. We also have a sports, we've got a team doctor for our programs as well. I know he comes to football games, but he serves all of our athletes. Dr. Kevin Gilson, who works as part of the sports medicine program at Milford Regional, he's been a fantastic resource for us. And then our athletic trainer, Megan Mello, and her program were bought up by Mass General recently. So we have now a connection with Mass General as well. So that's, that's really a great thing that we can offer all of our families. And lastly, should mention the creation of the Nittany Athletic Hall of Fame. This is, we had our second class inducted about four or five months ago. We'll be ready to announce, take nominations for our third class, but another way that we're able to connect our programs with the community and with the past, right? And, and bring that back here. So some things that we've been doing. And lastly, it's been our focus on some social emotional wellness this year. We've partnered with an organization known as Kyle, Kyle Cares. Kyle Cares is run by a gentleman named Jim Johnson, who sadly lost his son, a former student athlete, who took his own life. And Jim and his family devoted their lives essentially to bringing awareness to social emotional well-being, not only in adolescent, but in student athletes. So it was a, it was something that our kids really sort of jumped at. And the two young ladies you see on the left, who I also know have been here, were just recognized by the MIAA for their efforts over the first half of the school year, and were recognized with a community service award that was announced today, if you saw. So they've done a wonderful job. The other thing we've done with this, too, is we've had workshops for our student athletes. We've also brought in professional development for our coaches. On the far right, you'll see almost standing where Scott is now, but about six months ago, Dr. John Madelman, Dr. Madelman came in and spoke to our fall coaches about, about mental health and how do you, as a coach, how can you be aware of such issues and what can you do? So he came and spoke to our fall coaches, and Kyle Cares has invested about $5,000 in our coaches over the next three seasons, who will receive professional development from local organizations in the realm of mental health awareness. Their first one is actually on Thursday. So our spring coaches, both Misco and Nittany, will be participating in that professional development virtually. And then we'll have one each season moving forward, so fall, and then finally winter, '23, '24. That's pretty much it. What's up next? Well, we're about ready for spring sports. So registration is open. We will be having our spring sports night next Tuesday, as you can see, all the sports that take place. And, you know, the exciting thing about spring means it's close to the end of the year, right? So we're two-thirds of the way there, and it's been a great two-thirds and looking forward to a great spring. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Possible question?
Sure.
Can we bring on a trainer to the staff this year? Can you mention something about our trainer joined Mass General?
So that's, we have a trainer who we use through a company that was called Precision. So Megan Mello, who is sort of our designated trainer, but she is technically not employed by us. She's employed by a company who was purchased by Mass General. So while Megan is our dedicated trainer, you see her here at the majority of our games, she's technically not an employee of the school. In most places that have a full-time trainer, they are employed through those school districts. In our case, not. So, so based on that, like, so Megan's not here full-time in the winter, and as a school that doesn't have hockey, as in our building, not necessarily, you know, it's not a have-to-have, I guess you could say. It would be something that would be great, and Megan was here for our basketball games, but she's not full-time. In the winter, or excuse me, the fall and the spring, you'll see her here, you know, 80, 90% of the time. So I'll touch base a little bit about middle school sports. I apologize. I was a speech learner, but I could talk about, talk about them all. Our fall sports, the boys and girls soccer, both teams had successful seasons. Field hockey this year, our coach was one of our former middle school students, Mackenzie Greenberg, who went to Hope Dale for high school, but she was my student in middle school, which was nice. She's one of two coaches that I've hired this year that were former students and players at Misco Hill School. Cross country had a great year. I believe they placed second in the DVCs, DVC championships for our middle school team. And then basketball season kind of going on. Mr. Schmidt's PD days for coaches, I talked about core values a lot. That's one of his goals, to revamp the handbook for the athletics. Our middle school basketball team, I think the girls haven't really played in three years. So, you know, opening up the season, we had to approach it in a different, a different manner because, you know, the girls just haven't played, so their ability was not up to par. So Coach McGuinness, you know, can coach just about anything. He spoke to the girls. He brought on new goals for the girls. You know, he let them know, you know, we're not going to, not going to dominate these games, but we need to work on goals. So you can speak to those girls on if they had a successful season. They would probably say they had a successful season as they improved as the season went on. But as for win-losses, I mean, they, they won two games out of 13. And that's just, just where they are. They're a young team. They were mostly seventh graders. I think there was two eighth graders on the team. And I'm hoping there's six graders coming up. They had a little bit more basketball, and they'll help out that team in the future. On the flip side, our boys went 14 and 2, I mean, 12 and 2. So they had a great winter season, great winter season, and they were coached by another former student, Derek DiMarzo. He cuts hair down Mendon, right by Papa Quirk over there in Little Plaza. But it was great. He was working up here with Coach Schmidt on the basketball team, helping out with the JV and varsity, which he's doing as well this year, too, which is nice. And then funny, we talked about the Mendon Upton Community Project. I was watching this weekend with my boys, Teen Wolf. I don't know if you guys remember that, the basketball. And as I'm watching Teen Wolf, I'm looking in the gym, and it's the same bleachers, this is 1985, same bleachers that I have, same exact backboards with the same brace in the back. So I just thought that was funny. And like Chris said, it is something that will definitely help our programs and help our schools, I think, with retention of students. I ask, keep updating and continue to move forward with these projects to improve the facilities. We look forward to the, to the seasons coming up, baseball, softball. And softball, we hired another former student, Rebecca Brogan, who'll be coaching my softball team this year. So it's good we're able to get back to those who were in the school and help them get started on their, on their first coaching careers down the middle school level. So that's about it. Just remember that our middle school program is self-funded. So we don't have, we really have a budget. We have, we have a transportation budget, but unfortunately, most of the season, we are unable to use transportation due to lack of bus drivers. So winter is about the only season that we're able to use buses because they're available. The other seasons, we are one of the larger middle schools with sports. Like, we have a lot of
Different sports compared to other
middle schools around us. So it is difficult to get busing. So we have waivers for, for parents. And, you know, we do the little checklist and the driver's license and stuff. Students are able to get to the games by their parents. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Cohen, return to your new business?
So if we could call up Ms. Lori Holloway. She'll be presenting an out-of-state field trip request to bring students from Misco Hill to Ecuador. And she'll give you all the details for that. I have the summary in the background now, so I'm also brought in the flyer.
Good evening. Unfortunately, I don't have a fancy Acme or fancy PowerPoint, but this would be my fifth trip that I would be leading. It would be our third trip to the Amazon. We currently have a group of 27, which is made up of three Misco staff members, nine parents, and 15 students. It is nowhere near the group of 80 that we started with, but as we know, a worldwide pandemic happened, and we are still, you know, getting back in the swing of things. But we're very excited to return to Ecuador. We've been assigned to the same hotels as our first trip, which we absolutely love. A hotel in the jungle is just magical, like sleeping in the jungle, listening to the birds and the insects. There's just nothing like it. When I got home, I actually had to download one of those white noise apps and play the jungle sounds for a while just to get used to it. What else can I tell you? It is a wonderful, phenomenal trip. Some of our highlights are whitewater rafting and hiking and tubing in the river. I think most importantly, it's interacting with local people, learning about their cultures and their traditions and their ceremonies, their arts, their way of life. Our Spanish immersion students are such an asset to us with the language. One of the things that we've worked to continue to improve since we first started is our involvement with the community and community service. So that first trip, we visited two schools, and it's kind of like Christmas morning where we're Santa Claus, and here's all these school supplies and toys. And the last trip, we really stepped it up, and we painted an entire school. So that was a fun day. We involved those students and those teachers as well. So it wasn't just like, here we are, we're going to fix your school, but it was something we did together. The kids get to go out on the field to play. And, you know, it was a really great experience for everyone. So we were very excited to go back. We have our same tour guide, who is just wonderful. And we're just very appreciative and grateful to have this opportunity. Are there any questions?
Do we need a motion to move through the trip? Good luck. Have a fun.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is to move into the first pass of the budget. Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to share the first pass of the budget. We are hoping that this doesn't feel like there are any surprises in it, especially for budget subcommittee members, too, because we will be reiterating, or, you know, a lot of what we've talked about throughout the year as we work through the whole budget development process. But, you know, at the end, if you have any questions after we go through, or questions and information you want us to, you know, get to after, we're going to focus on the first portion. There are about 60 slides in here, I think. We're not going through 60 slides. So if you saw that, we just added an additional information section. So if there's something you were looking for later, wanted to look at, you know, particular data that we just had those slides in there. Right. You've noticed the theme this year. We have been starting with some quotes in our budget presentations. And one thing that Jay and I were talking about is when we're setting up the budget, and a lot of the first part of this, I'm going to talk about our process, but as well as how we prioritize the budget development process. And a piece of that will come back to what we do value and what our goals are for our strategic planning and also implement.
strategic planning and also input from all of the stakeholders in our schools. So tonight, our goals are to provide you with an overview of that process, to give you a summary of our priorities related to the budget for next year, and also just basically to present our first pass, and we'll outline our budget driver, some challenges, some goals we're looking for, and some uncertainties or variables that still remain at this point in the process. As Jay likes to say, you really like this chart? Which I do, because I think it's a great visual to work us through the process. So you can see that we're in March, on the bottom there, we've already gone through, you know, preparation at the beginning of the year, and then, you know, you've seen all of the departmental presentations. I've had numerous internal meetings with Jay and members of our department leaders, district leaders, school leaders as well. And so here we are presenting, and then we bring it to the budget hearing on March twentieth. If you go to the next slide. A different way to look at this process, I've linked in here, so you'll have access, quick access to all of the departmental budget presentations. If you want to go back and remember what had been presented to you, or if you had missed a meeting, you know, you'll be able to see that pretty easily. And you can see the number of budget subcommittees, but we basically start in October, we start to have real conversations around November and through December, and then we start to refine as more information's coming in. So guiding principles in the budget process, one goal for us is to make sure that when we are developing our budget, we're collaborative, we're transparent, and we added in that level of transparency with the budget website, you know, so we can quickly, once we, you know, have this done, we can put this up there, we can communicate to the community, you know, parents and families, staff members, et cetera, about the process. But it's collaborative, it's not Jay and I in a room making up numbers, although, you know, there's a lot of Jay and I working through this, but, you know, it's a lot of ground-up conversations from, starting at the building and teacher level as well. A guiding principle in our process is student-centered decision-making. We're always thinking about what's in best interest, the best interest of all of our students academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally, and that's at the forefront of our decisions and our priorities. And we've also been talking a lot about, we have short-term needs that come up and changes from year to year, and also we're thinking about our long-term planning, long-term needs, which is part of our strategic plans as well, to start being a little bit more forward-thinking in our planning moving forward. I worked our team through a budget prioritization process, and some of this comes from that, and some of it came from really just what, what we do as we develop the budget. But if you stop, start at the top, we do take into consideration the financial considerations that exist in our two communities, the town considerations. We talked a lot about stability and sustainability of our budget. We always are driven by our strategic goals, and we also are always looking for community input to know what the community members are looking for. We, through even our strategic planning, we're asking for lots of feedback from the community to help drive our future budget. So some of the community, community expectations, if we were to list out, you know, typical school system, what benefits that community members are looking for in a school system, there's usually a core twenty to thirty, thirty-two to be exact, I think, but twenty to thirty. These are the top ones that would rise to the top of every school district. And front and center for us, obviously, when we are talking about our budget, we're always thinking about student safety and well-being as part of that, maintaining and exceeding where we are right now with high-quality instruction, preparing our students to be college and career-ready, and also offering a wide range of programmatic choices. What comes to mind? You just saw some of our programming, and that's just one small snapshot that impacts a lot of our students in athletics and music, but you also heard our student representatives here talking about DECA, talking about other opportunities as well, and focus on the whole child. And I think that's, if we were to ask community members and families what they're asking for, that's, these would be categories that would rise to the top along with some other categories. Just as a quick reminder, district and strategic goals, we've been focusing on this year, understanding our students better through data inquiry, so we can support them through our MTSS system, engaging them with alignment to the portrait of the learner competencies, and looking at communications and planning and future planning. And finally, you'll hear us talk about when we get into the fixed costs, but some of the, the main drivers, we have fixed cost mandated programming, that student support service delivery, we have curriculum and instruction that we're continuing in standards from the state. We have technology infrastructure, which is essential for maintaining and being part of, we talked, we heard about it being the fourth utility. It's not extra, not nice to have anymore, it's, we, we talked about it even today, the meeting, you know, at our homes, we have Wi-Fi, we have computers, we have phones, it's, it's a big part of what we do, and also in the future workplace. And also, you've been, heard a lot this year about buildings and grounds and impact of our facilities on our educational environment. And so those are some key areas, along with other areas that we'll talk about. So all of those come into play, and we look to see how they can align in our work. It wouldn't be a presentation by me if I didn't give a little plug for our current strategic plan and our goals. We know that we're working on the current, the next plan, five-year plan, and part of that will be probably involving some investments, you know, budget and fiscal investments in the future, but right now, we're gonna be focusing on continuation of a lot of our work that we're doing this year. We know we're not gonna just suddenly stop working on multi-tiered systems of support, so you'll see, you know, some of those areas are gonna show up in our budget that are related to our current action steps and goals for this year as well. This is similar to an image I shared last year of how we prioritize when we have requests that come in. The first thing we're looking to do, we start at the bottom there, and we start at maintaining our level services. That's class sizes, that's programs, services that we're current, at the level we're currently providing to our students. And then we focus in on any critical needs that arise. Sometimes we can plan out for critical needs that we can see coming in a few years, and sometimes things change from one year to the next, and that's why sometimes you may have differences in what the school buildings would come, and principals would come forward for, and ask for a position. It may, sometimes you'll see some that continue every year, and others, there's a shift because something else has been going on or rising to the top for priorities. Third, always the strategic investments and alignment to our plan, strategic plan, and I added in program, programmatic enhancements. As we analyze how we're doing things and look at how can we do things differently, we have been able to identify areas where if we had different, a good example is at Misco, you know, he, Scott, talked about it's, you know, self-funded and fundraising with a little bit of investment, that's a programmatic enhancement, that we could do different things with our Misco Hill athletics, that we were invested in that as well, just one flipside example there. And all of that, it's supposed to be an umbrella, I didn't know how to make an umbrella with the tools that I had, but it looks like that. It's all within this fiscal balance, so what's the quote we want it all, but?
You can't always get what you want.
Right, so we keep coming back to that, but we, we get, we get what we need, right? So we, we know it's a balance, and, but there's always different improvements that we could be making in the district. So our three main areas and goals for this year's budget, first, I'm gonna start at the top, which is similar to what I just talked about, to really continue the high-quality service and instructional practices that we have for our students, to ensure that we have a level service budget, maintaining class sizes at appropriate levels, and keeping the services that are currently provided to maintain high-quality instruction. Next, you'll hear more about this than you have throughout the year, related to the comprehensive multi-tiered systems of support that we have been working on for years. You've heard a lot this year about our data inquiry, our assessment systems, you've heard a lot about various interventions and supports that we're providing to students as a result of the data that we're receiving, and also you've seen some of the results that are happening because of additional supports that we put in in the last couple of years. But really, we are still recovering from the pandemic, and it, in many ways, so academically, but also in the mental health and well-being of our students, and we continue to work to provide the supports to help them thrive and meet our mission. And future-ready, lots of different categories and names for this, but really, we always want to keep our eye on the future and our goals and purpose with school, and so we're always looking to see through areas such as tech integration, PD, program enhancements, focusing on portrait of learner competencies, authentic learning, you know, opportunities, our career, you know, focus with internships, just ways that we can continue to improve. They are, they show up in our budget through, you know, various line items or things that our schools have prioritized in the process. Right? You want to do this one?
Sure.
Go for it.
Go for it. Okay. So tonight, we're gonna present with you the budget proposal as it stands right now, not necessarily what you're gonna hear again in two weeks, it might be changed slightly. It's a forty-one million, two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-three-hundred-dollar budget, it's a two-point-eight-three-percent increase. What I want to emphasize here, and you see it in red there, is that preliminary discussions we've had with the towns is that what we're talking about tonight is probably not within their ability to fund it. There's about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar gap, and that's gonna take some work to work it through with both towns. But right now, we're presenting an expenditure-based budget, this is where we'd like to be with the proposed positions that we have in the budget. This is my cool pie chart that I like to put in every year, it tells you how the expenditures break out. We spend fifty-two percent on instruction alone, benefits, and, you know, fixed charges, which are other things that we have to do related to everybody that works for us, means that about seventy percent of our budget is going toward instruction and personnel. Out of district is a, where is out of district done here? It's four percent. Maintenance is ten percent. So it just kind of breaks it out, gives you kind of a visual of how the expenditures break out. It's a good thing that the majority of our money is going toward instruction. The drivers, the big things that are driving the budget this year, transportation is one, we just went out to bid, you're gonna be voting on that tonight, it's a ten-point-four-percent increase, which is more than typically we encounter. I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the contract itself. Right now, health insurance, they're proposing an eleven-point-eight-percent increase, we will be negotiating that, I guarantee it. Right now, that's the number that's in the budget, but I'm sure that we're gonna do better than that. Salary, steps, lanes, colas, everything related to salaries for all of our employees is a net five-point-three-five-percent increase. The colas, two and a quarter, but when you put in steps and lanes, it adds quite a bit more to it. It does not, that number does not include any new positions we're gonna talk about tonight, that's just existing employees. Out of district tuition, as you know, is up fourteen and a half percent. We do have a way to offset that a little bit, which we'll get into, but that's what we're looking at for private school tuition. We have put into this budget funding for leases for iPads, you heard Dave and Joe talking about it last week, we have never funded that as a recurring cost, we need to do that now. Wister retirement is something that we're assessed every year for those employees that aren't on the mass teachers retirement system, it's a nine-and-a-half-percent increase. Payroll tax is gonna be up four-and-a-half percent because salaries are gonna be up. Property casualties up five percent, building maintenance up a little under five percent, so that is up to about two-and-a-half, almost two-point-six-million dollars in fixed costs that are pushing the budget forward. This is a little bit about the out-of-district tuition thing. They, every year are supposed to approve it, as Eric said, usually it's one percent, two percent, two-and-a-half percent. This year, they came out with fourteen percent. The big drivers for that, because I went back and found what they sent out, are personnel costs, payroll tax, fringe benefits, and administrative costs. I am sure that their costs are going up, maybe they've been held down. Fourteen percent seems a little excessive, in my opinion. They don't really care about my opinion, so it is what it is. It's gonna push our private school tuitions up quite a bit. I just, I think I've told you before, I reached out to all of the schools we have students in, they all basically responded with an answer of it, fourteen percent's the number, that's the number.
Yeah, yeah. I can jump in here. So this is the same chart, yes, that I just had before.
Where's the umbrella?
The umbrella's at the top, it's a little bit, can't see up there. And so when I color-coded this, because I like my colors, but when we talk about staffing, initial requests, and then how we're prioritizing and making decisions, I did my best to color-code just so you can get a sense of what, so the blue that you'll see in the next few slides will be related to level services, and then green, that critical needs and then strategic investments. So I wanted to kind of do a little bit of a look back, so if you go to the next slide. Yeah? Thank you. So this is our process that we went through last year in the budget, and so what I, I want to be able to show that, you know, we have our principals, our department leaders are advocating for what they, what they feel they need and what will benefit our students. Every year, if we were to go back multiple years, you would have a list that is close to that size of what we identify that we know will make a difference, but we also know we're under that fiscal umbrella, right? And we need to prioritize, and that's an important part of the discussions, and important part of why we set goals and priorities and, and work with collectively to make those decisions. And what I've been trying to do with the departmental presentations is to have them also identify, what is that return on investment that the towns have made, that we have made in these positions, and what that impact is on student learning? So that's what you kind of, you have listed on, on the right there. So some of the fulfilled requests, we focused on level services of, you know, grade five and grade four teachers for class sizes. We've seen a huge impact on wellness teacher, assistant principal, you've heard that in some of the presentations. Currently, we're still keeping the EL teacher with some grant funding, but that's with SRO grants, so that's gonna run out next, after next year, so we're gonna have to roll that in, but to help support us, we have shared services with tech and SROs as well. We had the mandate of the media center specials at the high school, programmatic strategic improvements with math, computer science, and programming at the high school, and we also had, you know, some cost-neutral, but, you know, adjustments in our staffing. And so for outcomes, we've seen reduced class sizes, still on the same one, go back, yeah, thanks. And we've seen the support for increased fleet of devices from the pandemic, I think sometimes people might forget, because I think we want to forget the pandemic, right? But that, part of it is we had a big influx of devices, so now we have one-to-one availability across the whole district, which, I don't know, we have our device management expert over here, but they, you know, the amount of work to maintain that, when we had a reduction in our staffing within those years as well, was really difficult, so having a shared service and, and adding a support is really needed to support Sam and everyone else who is managing that fleet of devices that we need to continue. We've seen, I can say personally, with SRO support and working on some of the district protocols and crisis management, they've just been invaluable for me, you know, so I, I do, I work with them all the time, we have meetings, you know, monthly to meet about safety and security and see if there are ways that we can make improvements just in our facility. So having, for me personally, it's, it's been great to have that resource full-time at, in all schools, but if you go to all schools, you will see SROs there, you know, helping out and, and being available and consulting, and it's been really great to have that, so I thank the towns for that support as well. At the middle school, you heard Jen Mannion talking a little bit about that wellness programming and impact, more students being able to take health and wellness, especially post-pandemic, we're able to, we've been working on growing our health programming, which came out of a study that I did in the curriculum review a few years back, and now we're actually putting in steps to meet that need that we identified, that we weren't really teaching it across the multiple school grade levels. Full coverage at the media center and programming, yes, accreditation, we have the computer science innovation pathways that you hear a lot about, that we're working on right now, and we were able to open the media center at the middle school as well. I could go on and on, and they present, but it has impact every day, those investments and staff, so that's So that's the impact this year. So in looking towards next year, on the left, we have our initial staffing requests listed out there. And you heard them all presented at all of the school and departmental presentations that you saw for budgets. So currently in our budget right now, in the blue is the level service and class sizes. So grade one, grade four, and grade six. And then grade two is Spanish immersion. As we continue to not have single strand of Spanish immersion in some grades, then it requires two teachers at each level rotating up, which means that restoration of that teacher in those various levels. We have a switch over in our Title I program we talked about. We had some grant funding and academic tutors. We believe this will be cost neutral, so it's not addition, but we like to put that in there that currently it's paid for through grants. But we think we'll be able to, you always explain a little bit better than me, but we think it'll be cost neutral. We also have a para SI role that we'd be switching to an academic tutor role. What we've found and talked about is we've realized the benefit of having a number of the SI classes in one building has allowed for us to use staff differently and really have the additional support. So you'll see you have academic tutors that are working with students in English, but we never had it, that availability for someone Spanish speaking to work with academic tutor interventions in Spanish. And so we were going to switch the pair support role, which was gloating, into academic interventionist kind of tutor role. We heard at, I guess, a couple of presentations ago from the Director of Student Support Services regarding the need for therapeutic programming. She presented programming at needs for elementary, middle, and high school. Our recommendation is to do kind of a rollout of that and start with elementary and then middle. And then we can add in that high school in the future. That would be the order I would prioritize if we had to choose between elementary and middle today. If I didn't have more information, the next couple of weeks that might come in after this presentation, but I would prioritize elementary. But right now, we have both of them in, in the budget right now. We have early education coordinator. So we have someone who's working, a retiree, Jackie Wheelock is working about ten hours right now. And that will, it is really a point five role for the early ed coordinator. And we're adding a whole new pre-K, so we have more students and more needs. And so we need to restore that to point five. And so the recommendation that is coming from our Director of Student Support Services is to have early ed coordinator be split with out of district coordinator, which is something that honestly has been asked for ever since I entered this district. Our prior Director of Student Support did out of district coordination for a while, and our current one does. And it is extremely time consuming and takes away from a lot of programmatic development and supervision and all the other tasks that consume that role. And so you could have, in a lot of places, you'd have a shared role. Like in my last district that I worked in, it was a shared role between the early ed coordinator, did the same thing, and the out of district. There's a lot of carryover, and sometimes the students come in with pre-K who might have needs, might have other future needs that you can kind of identify and work with from early on. So that is the list of the initial staffing requests. I did, just so you know, for information later, if you want more information. For those who haven't heard, some of the requests at Budget Subcommittee. For me, at the end, I have some more of the rationales and class sizes too, that we can go to questions on that. So how much does that cost?
Five hundred and sixty thousand dollars is for those new positions. And six hundred, five hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred dollars. So that's a nice list. It just kind of puts the list, so you see what we're budgeting. We budget, you see all the teachers are at the same amount. We budget a master's step three or four in that range. Obviously, sometimes you end up getting somebody at a higher level, sometimes you get somebody at a lower level. But that's what we use as a budgeting purpose for now. We've gone a little bit higher on the therapeutic and psychologist positions, just based on what we think we're going to have coming in and their, you know, their degree status. And I'll keep going. So let's talk about the revenue.
Just therapeutic teachers, are those in the standard teacher?
Yes, they would be as a teacher's contract, yes.
So that's not a separate?
No, we're just.
And this cost is just the higher?
We're thinking that generally, you're going to bring somebody in for that that probably has a master's, maybe even fifteen, you know, plus fifteen or plus thirty, might have six or seven years experience. Just depends, they could come in much less. We could find somebody that's, you know, master step one, but you just never know. So I'm trying to budget based on, you know, I try to protect ourselves so that we don't get caught.
Is there a reason the committee decided to, for a school psychologist, consider an adjustment counselor for therapy program? Just because adjustment counselors typically are not as expensive?
Yeah, so Jen talked about this at the presentation, so I'll try to capture what she communicated. So we have been asking for, you know, adjustment counselor has been in need that they've been asking for as well. With the school psychologists, currently, our school psychologists mostly do testing. And so the role here, you would still have the ability to do some of the testing, but they would be doing more of the targeted and just potentially higher, higher skills and ability to do more that might be needed in that therapeutic programming.
Well, that was why I asked the question, is the, is the vision to share some of the evaluations as well as working with the therapist program?
I think that's a possibility, and they would have that ability to do that, particularly with the students who might need it as well. And as questions come up, if it's something I don't, you know, need to get more specific from the individuals who aren't here, I can, I can get that for you too, so that is helpful.
Okay, revenue. So we talked about this last week, I'll just mention it again. You've heard a lot of stuff in the press about how the governor's investing lots of money into education. The bottom line is that that's true, it's just not coming to mend it enough. And you can see some of the statistics there. You know, sixty-seven percent of the districts are left sharing a total of seven million dollars worth of new money for chapter seventy. Money's geared toward low income communities, communities that are growing in enrollment. Mendon up is neither of those. I mean, we're sort of a stable, you know, stable as far as enrollment and stuff. So we're not getting a lot out of the state at this point, at least not so far. Here's our state revenue, and this is the same as we presented to you last week. We're getting thirty dollars a student in chapter seventy. It's about sixty thousand dollars. Transportation is up. The reimbursement rate, based on what we have, is about eighty-eight percent, but it's based on the cost for transportation two years ago. Not even last year, but FY twenty-one, it's off the end of the year report. That's still, that's a bump, and that potentially is going to change when the governor finalizes the budget. We won't get a final number until July sometime, but that's the cherry sheet number as it stands right now. Charter tuition, you see that's a decrease, but there's also a decrease on the expenditure side for cost for tuition. This is our reimbursement. A year ago, it was twenty students, it's now seventeen, so we're actually getting about sixty thousand dollars less this current year than what was on the cherry sheet, but the tuition costs have also gone down correspondingly. But, so there's a reduction. Total state aid, it's less than one percent, just nine, you know, point nine six percent. It's not a lot, but that's what we expected when we started putting the numbers together. And it's what the way it's going to be, quite honestly, for the next several years, unless we have an enormous enrollment spike. This is just a little chart that kind of shows you, people always ask, well, why is the budget going up year after year after year? You can see that the thing that's driving it up is the district contribution required by the state. If you look at that top bar, it's about the same size all the way along. It's the bottom part that keeps growing up. That's because they're trying to move us toward our target share, and we're not there yet. So every year, they try to put more of the cost for education on the local community and not on the state. Again, we, I said this before, we just want to make sure you understand that what we're presenting to you tonight is based on expenditures. The revenue may not necessarily match this in the end, and we might have to make some other decisions in the next couple of weeks. We've got about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar gap right now between what the towns have indicated they can afford and what we're presenting right now. So we just want to make sure that's understood.
Final numbers that we're about to present.
Right, I don't want anybody to like go running home saying, oh my God!
We'll work through it.
All right, mended. Their chapter seventy money was up two hundred and seventy-five thousand, approximately, three and a half percent. Transportation, you'll see it's a decrease. That's because the way the transportation net of state aid is calculated is you take the total cost for the entire district transportation, subtract from that what we're getting in reimbursement, the remaining balance is appropriately allocated out to the two towns based on their enrollment percentage. Because transportation reimbursement is up, that's going to come down a little bit. Operational additional is what's considered prior override money that's been approved for the school districts. That kind of just balances all out to get to a bottom line based on the total budget. Mendon's net increase, based on what we're presenting to you tonight, is a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. It's a one and twenty-four percent increase. You can see debt services downward in the last year, so the reality is debt services outside the levy. So within the levy, they're looking at a one point four four percent increase. When you factor in the reduction in debt services, it's actually one point two percent. Now, this is happening because you'll see on the next slide, Upton's number, their chapter seventy money is double what the increase is double what Mendon's is. It's five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So when that happens and you allocate the balance left, it skews those numbers a little bit. And so therefore, although this is going to present a number for Upton of five hundred and forty-seven thousand, Mendon's share is only a hundred and forty-five thousand, whatever that number was, a hundred and fifty-four thousand. That's because of the way the calculations have to be done based on the regional agreement. Same thing though, transportation's down a little bit, operation additional is up. The five forty-seven, I believe, is the number that is exceeding what Upton has told us they can afford at this particular point in time. So we still have to have some discussion. It's five thirty-two after you take out the debt service, but that's a substantial increase compared to Mendon's piece. And that's, that, this will be our challenge, is to try and get this part into a manageable amount. The next slide is district funding. You'll see we're increasing our E and D appropriation by three hundred thousand dollars. I'm fairly comfortable doing that. We are in good shape as far as E and D right now. The shared technology pieces, Upton's what they pay us for the services that we're providing to them. The bond premium, when you, when you go out of debt, they, in essence, give you like a, what's called the bond premium, which is kind of like, here's some money for by doing it through us, and then you've appropriated annually against your interest. We're at the end, so it's only eleven hundred bucks. Transferring from revolving, excuse me, is three revolving accounts that we run programs that are profitable, and we use some of those funds to allocate toward the operational budget. It's been the same hundred fifty thousand as long as I can remember. Interest is what we earn in the money. We're increasing our Medicaid reimbursement to eighty-five thousand, fifty thousand. We probably can even push that a little bit more if need be. It just, it's hard to say what it's going to be. I think this year, we're right around eighty-five thousand, ninety thousand at this point, but we probably have more money to come in. We get reimbursed for any services we provide for anybody that's Medicaid eligible, regardless of whether it's special ed, regular ed, if they make visits to the nurse, if they're getting speech therapy. All that stuff is reimbursable. You know, the Student Support Services Department specifically, Lori B is the one that sort of keeps on top of all this stuff. They do a really good job of making sure that we get as much as we can possibly get. So we're looking at, you know, a substantial three hundred and thirty thousand increase just from the district. This is the revenue broken out again by percentages. You can see right now, Upton is at thirty-six percent, the state's at thirty-four percent, Mendon's at twenty-seven, and the district amount is three percent. So it just kind of breaks it out till you can visualize where the money's coming from. Now, you might wonder, you know, we've talked about a lot of increases. We haven't talked about how we actually are going to pay for all of these things. So there are things in our budget currently that either are going to increase in revenue, that's going to help support this, or are going away. Norfolk Aggie is one. We had four hundred and six thousand dollars in the budget this year for Norfolk Aggie. We have zero actually. Now it is going to the towns, but we're not paying for it anymore because we're shifting that expense over to the towns, which is where it should have been all along. So that's one substantial change. We're looking at a change in the health insurance that we provide to retirees. It's just a, it's the same network, it's a different provider, but it's still a Harvard Pilgrim network of things, but it's a national one as opposed to a local one. It's going to save us a fair amount of money. It's going to save all of them a fair amount of money because it's going to cut their costs by twenty-five percent as well, but it is in essence the exact same plan with the exact same coverage. So we're looking to do that. We're increasing our school choice appropriation, similar to E and D. I'm comfortable in the amount we have in that account. We generally are profiting between four and five hundred thousand dollars a year in school choice. We always appropriate some to offset some of our costs, and we're doing that again. Circuit breaker is up. That's how we're going to cover the increase in out of district tuition. As you saw, it was three hundred and fifty thousand, it's an increase. We're getting three hundred and sixty thousand more circuit breaker, so that's going to work. We're a year ahead, it makes sense. What we get this year is what we appropriate for next year. So I already know what we're getting this year, and that's why I can put that number in comfortably, and that's why we're in that position. So that helps. And then E and D, as I said, we're adding three hundred thousand dollars in that area as well. So we're putting in an extra one and a half million that's going to offset some of those increases. So that's how we cover it. You know, that's how it works. Go ahead, Eric, you got a question?
Yeah, Jay, is the E and D that's on, that's slide twenty-nine they're on right now?
It's also on slide twenty-seven, but yes.
Just to clarify, some of those are expenses that are being reduced and others are?
Correct. No, no, Norfolk Aggie's going away, so there's a savings in other cases.
Sometimes the larger, the, the, last year's column is larger than this year's column. Sometimes it's the other way around, it's always a positive change on the right side.
Yeah, what I wanted to do is total up what the savings were. Some of them are reductions in expenditures, some of them are increment in appro, increasing appropriation toward it. But it's adding money, you know, revenue to the budget. So again, forty-one million, two fifteen, three hundred dollars. From what the towns have told us, they're at about forty million, nine sixty-five. So we've got about a little under two hundred fifty thousand dollar shortfall, based on the information we've gotten from the town so far. We've got some things obviously to work on. Health insurance is a big one, because I guarantee you, we're not going to pay eleven point eight percent. I can't tell you it's not going to be eleven point seven percent, but we countered with a six percent when they gave us that last week, and I haven't heard back yet. My expectation is it's going to be in the eight to nine percent. You know, we could obviously, in order to cover this, you know, to cover this offset, we could eliminate some of the new positions that we're proposing. State aid could go up, although unfortunately, we're not going to know that till probably July, so that's not going to help us in two weeks. And then additional local funding, depending on what the towns can do, and then we'll probably have those discussions next week at the Budget Subcommittee. This is kind of a summary again of the same things, health insurance, the retiree plan, district tuition can always change. People come back, people go out. Staffing, you know, if people choose to retire but haven't told us yet, that can be an offset that saves us some money. Leave of absences, if teachers are out and they, right now, I have anybody that's out on a leave of absence in the budget. But I believe at least one of them, and possibly two, may not be returning. That will be a little bit of a savings as well, depending on who replaces those people for the year. Discussions with the town, obviously, enrollment is still an unknown, especially kindergarten. I know they just had kindergarten registration, I believe, last month, but.
Yeah, and our numbers, I mentioned this recently, are where they normally would be. They're a little bit lower, I just, people haven't submitted yet, so. But if it goes, if it stays low, then that would be something, you know, re-allocation or looking at teachers or kindergarten go for that, you know, grade one position. But we've been seeing the growth in enrollment, so we anticipate that'll be what it's been to, for maintaining. But there happened some years where it's come in in the summer or come in late, where we need to add a staff number to meet those class size needs too. So that's always, that's the one unknown, as much as we have enrollment projections to kind of help us.
Yeah, you know, people can move into town over the summer, that happens every year. And what they bring their kids with, they tend to want to go to school, so we kind of have to take care of that. And that about summarizes it, I believe. Questions? Nikki has a question, she's giving me that.
The, so the health insurance, so if you get that in the eight to nine percent range, what does that amount to in terms of like the two hundred fifty thousand dollars?
You know what, I was going to look that up to make sure I had an accurate number. I would tell you it's probably around a hundred thousand dollars, maybe a hundred and fifty. It depends on where we actually end up and.
True.
But I could, if you want, I can give you five minutes and I can figure it out.
No, I'm just trying to get a ballpark idea.
It would be helpful, obviously.
I actually did, did the calculation based on your expenditure slide earlier, and if it comes in at eight percent, it's, that's. I actually did, did the calculation based on your expenditure slide earlier and if it comes in at 8%, it's that's $12,000.
Yeah, so it's, it's around that area. So that would, that would be very beneficial. We're probably not going to have an answer for that in two weeks either. They wait for the next loss ratio report. So every month they do what's called the loss ratio report. That report tells us what your claims were, what your liability is, and they want that ratio to be around 88%. And that's when they consider it. That's their number below that is great and above that isn't so good. We're at like 90% right now, but we do have a high claim coming off in the report that will come out in March. Doesn't mean anything in some respects because, you know, these health insurance companies, as much as they're nonprofits, they're there to make money. So they're going to make sure that they get their share. I mean, because that margin is their profit margin. And they're looking for 12% as a profit margin. You know, so we'll see where it ends up, but I'm thinking it's going to be around eight. So, you know, that's what I think is probably around $100,000. Other questions?
Has there been more participation from town representatives in this budget development process? It feels like, I know that was, that's been our goal over the last couple of years and this feels like it has more impact from the towns.
Every subcommittee meeting, what we've had, the town administrator, town manager from Upton's been there, the chair of the FINCOM has been there. There's been a number of members of the FINCOM there from Menden. Helena has been there who's on select board. My daughter's been there who's on the select board. Can't remember if somebody from the finance committee came once or not. I don't, but they, Menden has participated as well.
Member from Menden came another meeting.
Right, right, yeah. So we've had, the towns have been participating in the process and it has been fairly collaborative. We're, you know, we want to work with the towns. We're not here to bankrupt the towns. You know, I don't want to be the person that says, yes, well, we got our teacher, but we have three less firemen or policemen or the roads aren't getting plowed this snowstorm or something like that. So we have to work with them because everybody has needs, everything is expensive and the towns are limited and what they can take in in revenue by prop two and a half, they can only get a two and a half per increase, two and a half percent increase in their revenue plus growth and that's it.
I've also really appreciated the various board members participating and what I find really helpful are the questions. So as questions come in, you know, even if we don't necessarily have every answer right there in that moment, but it really helps us for communicating better and being able to answer, you know, they're living in the towns and able to come back with those questions that they're hearing. And then we can try to communicate better about priorities or the complexities of the budget or mandated needs that people might not understand in today's, you know, school systems or post pandemic impacts. So that's, that's been helpful too.
And this is the most important slide. Which is why you all have a little package in front of you today. Because I believe that we need to honor national days at all times and this is the perfect cookie. I've talked about it already. Not necessarily the healthiest cookie, but the perfect cookie.
Are you a purist, Jay, or do you like all the new flavors?
No, they made the perfect cookie and then they messed it up by making all the various.
How are we doing this year on like snow and ice budget? Is this, this year's snow and ice budget?
Ah, the snow and ice. I haven't done an update. Well, we were doing great up until two weeks ago. It, it'll be fine because we've had really small storms and they had to come through once and just kind of clear the parking lot. They've been throwing a lot of salt down, but that, we do that every year, even if it doesn't snow, just to get rid of the ice. I think we're going to finish in fairly good shape with that. We do have a lot of things. I think we talked about it last week when we were talking about facilities. There's a lot of things that need to get done that we're hoping that some of this extra money that we're not going to use on things like snow and ice, we can invest into, you know, fixing some of the parking lots, fixing some of the fields, the ramp. There's a lot of things that we would use that for that we get to the end of the year. But I'm not going to jinx us now because apparently March is snow March as well.
I think another storm's coming.
Winter is coming.
Other questions? So as you go through it or look at the additional slides, have questions, you know, feel free to just send them to Jay and help me show the answer that that sentence will listen to. And we'll, we'll answer that. We want to make sure really clear and with our, what we're communicating by that budget hearing as well. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Good, good presentation.
Transportation.
Oh, true. Okay, so you have in front of you the transportation. I believe that included in the packet was the bid that went out. The contract is there as well. We have one bidder, which is our current company, Telstone and Sons. As you know, we had an extension, an optional extension in the contract. And we could just exercise that option as opposed to signing a new three-year contract. The costs for FY '24 are identical in both. The costs in FY '25 and the new bid are considerably less because as he told me, I just threw a number out there because I wouldn't know what to predict at that point. That contract was put in place right at the beginning of the pandemic. I want to say like a month before. The things that are driving his costs up are drivers. First of all, you can't get them and that's a problem. You heard Chris talking about that as well. But, you know, salaries are up, cost of fuel is up, cost of buses are up. All of his costs are going up and that is what's pushing this type of an increase. I'm not thrilled with a 10% increase in transportation. I'm not thrilled with the fact that we only get one bidder when we go out to bid, but that's the way it is. So I would recommend that we approve this budget and move forward. They're a good company. They're, they've worked for us for many years. They only handle three districts. It's all local. They have property in town where they keep the buses. I mean, you know, they're a good company. I just, I would, you know, I would love that they can have more, more drivers and more buses so we can do more things outside of the regular day. But, you know, if you can't hire people, you can't hire people. I can't really put them at fault for that.
All right, so we need a vote?
Yes.
Any questions for Jay? Eric? Do we have a motion to approve the transportation bid as presented?
I move that we approve the transportation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Somebody has to sign it from the school committee, the chair or the vice chair.
Okay.
It's up to you guys and he's already signed it, I believe.
Yep.
It will be all set. Thank you.
All right, on to old business, a review of the 2023-24 school calendar.
So the calendar has been reviewed by the association. I basically took the couple, two days that were midweek, half days, moved them to Mondays. So we're going to try, they thought there might be too, it might be too disruptive for teachers to have it in the middle of the week. So we'll try that and then we'll come back to that as well. That was the only change. And we'll do, before it goes to full publication, we'll do kind of final, you know, look at it, see if there are any typos or anything like that. So if you catch anything, let us know, but it should be, should be good to go.
Any other questions? So I'm sorry, can you say it one more time? You, you took the professional days that were mid.
Yeah, we, we're trying instead of having them all on Fridays. The last iteration, I had a couple, you know, one on a Wednesday, one on a Tuesday. And so the feedback was they thought it might be too disruptive for the, you know, teaching instruction, et cetera. So we moved those two to Monday. So there should be, I can pull it up, but I think it might be February, December. Yeah. So that's the only change that I made from last time to this time.
All right. Any other questions? The motion to approve the 2023-2024 school calendar.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous vote. Okay. On to school committee. Actually, did you get any feedback from the elementary schools? Because I mentioned it in my, I read for America, whatever it was, the across America class. If they had any feedback for the school calendar, they should get in touch with you. Or they should have your, their parents get in touch with you.
I did not.
Missed opportunity.
That's like, that's good though. Get them involved.
I'm very dedicated to a meeting, but I didn't see it. All right, school committee, subcommittees, policy subcommittee?
Meeting Thursday.
All right. Are you through the A's?
I think it's the.
Yeah, excellent, excellent. All right, budget subcommittee, we haven't met since the last school committee and we've got a meeting on the calendar for Tuesday, March 14th, which would be the night before the Menden presentation.
Both may look very similar to tonight's presentation.
Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee.
Met last week. Here checking on the schools. We said we'd place up the timeline for remainder evaluation, which represents your final presentation. You two have gathered some feedback and you have gathered a final report ready to present to the committee. She's expressed that things are going well. There are some challenges that do exist and I'm trying to address those issues.
All right. So school committee goals. I missed the last school committee meeting and thought that would be taken care of. Was there any update from our chair?
It hasn't been brought forward for a vote, so.
Okay.
My recommendation is to take a look at it.
I, I will, I'll chase down the one blank spot on here.
That would be our goal.
Yeah.
And then I think I did some word smoothing on all the others, so if you guys want to take a look at the other three or four that are there, I'll, I'll, I'll get Phil to get the last one populated and when we're together, what, two weeks? There we go. All right, are there any other matters not anticipated within the last 40 hours, 48 hours of the posted meeting? Okay, correspondence. I don't believe we have any correspondence. Future agenda items will be to discuss the fiscal year 2020 budget. A motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, the meeting's closed at 8:47.